Good morning. I call to order the regular meeting, planning board meeting for October 19th, 2023. Welcome to those who have joined us in person as well as those who are joining us online. We thank you for your interest in planning board matters. If you will now, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Carrie McCullough is out of town due to work, but she is joining us electronically this morning. She has all the rights and responsibilities as if she were here in person. Next on our agenda is adjustment approval of the agenda. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda as follows. Under old business, where we currently don't have anything today, I would propose to add an information item on the table of uses that Mr. Kirkland provided to us at the September meeting. If you remember, we delayed that until our work session this coming Tuesday, but I thought it would be helpful if he would at least go through the information, tell us what we have, so that we can all be a little better prepared and ready to work on Tuesday. So with that motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Mr. Brooks, second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you all very much. Next item is approval of the minutes from the August 17th, 2023 meeting. Those start on page two of your agenda packet. We'll start with Mr. Brooks and come down the line to see if you have any corrections, modifications, or edits. Mr. Brooks?
No, Madam Chair.
Mr. Bradley? Ms. Morgan? Mr. Persher?
No.
Mr. Pittman? Okay, I do have one question, Madam Clerk, that you might can, I might have just missed something. On page six, about two-thirds of the way down the page in bold where it starts with Mr. Bradley made a motion, at the end, the last sentence says the motion passed five to one, and I'm not seeing Ms. McCullough's vote in there. I think she was one of the five.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. So if there are no other amendments to the minutes, I will accept a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. We're now at the public comment period of our meeting. For anyone who wishes to speak, just a reminder that you will have three minutes. Please state your name and address when you approach the podium. And I don't think we had a sign-up sheet for today. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, very good. Seeing none?
Chairman, if I could just note that I had distributed some comments
Yes, thank you.
from Ms. LaFervre and given them out to the planning board members, and we'll incorporate her comments into the minutes. Just wanted to note that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. So everyone probably noticed, we did receive an email a few days ago, and there was some dialogue back and forth about that, but we will take their comments and incorporate them into this meeting. Okay, so we'll move on to old business. Mr. Kirkland, if you'll go ahead and just tell us what we have in our packet for Tuesday.
Y'all, excuse me and bear with me. I've been fighting something the last few days on the recovery end, but just bear with me if I sound a little out of sorts. I'll walk you through, you had an agenda item in September that was moved to the special meeting next Tuesday. I'll go ahead and just walk you through some of those items, so that maybe you're better prepared to have a full conversation on Tuesday. I do think it's probably prudent to save discussion and work on this for that meeting, since we had moved that one specifically to it. It's a good primer to go ahead and go through some of this, because some of these are new concepts that the town might, should the planning board and town council amend the ordinance to include. Some of these are new for the town, so it's a good idea to go ahead and know what we're talking about. I'm getting the PowerPoint pulled up here. All right. So in that, in that agenda packet, staff had begun drafting proposed amendments to the table of uses in an effort to modernize that table of uses, as we've discussed quite a few times. Many, quite a few uses in the, in the table are redundant, or so similar as to have no practical difference between the two, whether it's a doctor's office or a dentist's office, or something, you know, there's no real difference between those two types of things from an on-the-ground standpoint. So it would help if I turned the clicker on, probably. So we've begun drafting that and just had some stuff for you guys to consider and review, and give staff feedback on it, if that's the direction this board would like to go as we work through the table of uses. Certainly a good starting point. Several items could be consolidated under that. First, we have a lot of airport-related uses that are specific, but they all could be umbrellaed under an airport, hangars, terminals, flight schools, et cetera, things you commonly see at an airport regardless of where it is. So having them specifically listed, once again, seems redundant. Churches and places of worship and their accessory uses, accessory buildings and structures. We had several listing for accessory buildings, but really, they could all be brought all under one accessory building style definition. K through 12 schools, I know we've discussed this at one point, that we had, you know, we had like kindergarten schools, and then middle schools, and then high schools seemed a bit odd. So certainly consolidating those could help us out there. Government buildings and offices, there were several government buildings that were specifically listed that could certainly be consolidated. This one was really interesting, manufacturing uses. I'd say it's interesting, because we had very specific uses, but they're all only permitted in one district. So it's not like they were, that some, some uses were allowed here and some uses were allowed there. They're all only permitted in the industrial zone. So if we're not going to differentiate where they can go, there's really not much reason to differentiate the specific uses themselves. A lot of places will simply adopt a light or a heavy manufacturing, heavy manufacturing being actual processing of raw materials, and light manufacturing usually be assembly of products into finished products, where there's not any raw material processing on site. And then recreational uses, we had several recreational uses in the ordinance. I know we've talked at length about consolidating those into kind of commercial, and then public, and then indoor and outdoor recreational style uses as well. So that seems like a good area that we could potentially consolidate some of those. Went ahead and when there was new things to be added, defined those uses based on the SIC manual when available, when we had a good, good corollary there. Staff also used APA Planner's Dictionary, which is a good reference for, for planners that's been out for several years now, with just a litany of definitions and examples to pull from for pretty solid definitions from other jurisdictions. In addition, we went ahead and drafted some potential supplemental regulations for you to consider. As I mentioned, some of these are kind of new concepts. We'll definitely walk through what some of those look like. I will say when we, before we move on to these, though, if you look in your agenda packet as you review it, you know, we made it all the way down to residential in our draft. And as I mentioned, several of these uses can be very easily consolidated. So we talked a lot about just the sheer number of items in our table of uses. A consolidation effort would hopefully significantly reduce those numbers to where there's a little bit more certainty. Certainly, we don't want an instance where a citizen looks through and sees what they, something that they think might apply to their business that they're trying to start, when really, there's a more specific one a little bit further down in the table that they didn't look at. If we consolidate it, we make it a little bit easier. We define those uses clearly. We make sure that everything goes where it's supposed to go in that regard. Scroll through here briefly. So supplemental regulations, these are all just examples. We just wanted to go ahead and give you some potentials that could go in there. More specific buffer requirements, we have several buffer options in the ordinance, but it's not always specific as far as what buffer type you can choose and what applies to what. So in some instances, it may be a good idea to go ahead and say, hey, we want this type of buffer specifically for this type of use, because we know the impacts that are going to be out there. Increased setbacks, you know, for specific uses, just to kind of add to that distance between uses. Potential light restrictions, there's some information in there about dark skylighting, which is something I've worked with in the past that is certainly an interesting concept to reduce light pollution. Increased use of pervious materials on certain sites could be something that the board could consider. In addition, low impacts to more development practices, this is like rain gardens, smart yards, et cetera, where we see you don't necessarily have a big wet pond, and it's got a fence around it, and you know, that's where all the trash ends up later on. Increasing the streetscape requirements, we do have streetscape requirements for many developments in the town, but in some instances, the town may want to consider, based on the use, having a little bit of a higher standard for something like that. Restricting development in special flood hazard area, certainly the zoning ordinance can, can, can do something like that. Not only does that, that also could potentially help us with our community rating system, which is our, one of our flood mitigation strategies here at the town. Potential height restrictions, I know this has been brought up quite a few times, but the town could certainly go lower than what's set up, although we can't increase things here on the island because of the, the nature of our, her height restrictions that we currently have. But should the, should the town want to reduce that further, there shouldn't be an issue there. In addition, floor area ratio requirements, this is a kind of new concept that the town hasn't really worked with in the past. I won't say it's new to the world, but it's new to the town. We don't have those here, and I'll kind of walk you through what those look like going forward. It's kind of an interesting way to base your floor area for a development on the size of area, on the size of the parcel that you're developing. So dark sky lighting, we have some information in the ordinance, and we do have a lighting ordinance that deals with how lighting should be designed. Dark skies takes it a little bit of a step further, ensuring that all of the light is pointed essentially downward, not onto any adjacent properties. In addition, the light is cast upward. Definitely something that I've dealt with in the past in other jurisdictions, and can greatly reduce some of the, some of the light pollution that you see with new development versus what you see a lot of times in outdoor lighting is just a light without any shielding at all that just kind of casts everywhere up into the sky, onto adjacent properties, et cetera.
We, we did ask the folks at the preserve to, to change their lighting to use the dark sky, and they did, they did agree to do that.
Yeah, I dealt with it quite a lot in another jurisdiction, and really, it is something that makes a big difference, but is, in my experience anyway, not, not difficult to implement for someone that's building a new project. But, but, once again, I'm not a builder, that's, that's just my experience with the regulatory end.
Can I ask a question about that? Does that only pertain to, you know, how the light is projected versus how high up the light is?
Yes. So if you wanted to consider something like that, too, like the height of lighting, et cetera, that would be in an additional type of supplemental regulation as well. Floor area ratio, this is used in a lot of jurisdictions to basically set a limit for how much floor area you have in a structure based on the size of the property that you're developing. So a couple of examples up here on the screen up the top is a 1.0 floor area ratio. Now, what that means is if you were to build a, a one-story structure, assuming you could mean all the other requirements of the ordinance, you could, you could build your structure to, to fill up that property. If you made it two stories, you could cover half, and if you made it three stories, you could cover a third, because you have to reduce that. It's the total floor area of the structure. And then, next time you see a half, so once you get a half, that means that one story can only cover half of the lot. Two stories could cover a quarter, and then three stories would be down to 17% lot coverage. Once again, it gives us a good, good way to develop based on a proportional scale instead of a hard scale. So it can be beneficial in that regard. We gave you a couple of examples in the draft ordinance for you to consider. You know, to a degree, some of these are subjective, although there are some guidelines that we see out there in the ordinance. You know, if you want like a traditional downtown neighborhood scale, you might have like a two or a three floor area ratio, because you want somebody to be able to build, and essentially build on the whole piece of property, and build a couple of stories where you might have residential or commercial on the bottom, and then residential up top. You want to be able to bring that building pretty far forward, close to the, to the street and the property line, versus a lower FAR requires more reservation of green space on that property, or at least not building space on that property. Low-impact developments, there's a couple of different ways that you can do this. The, the town actually does a pretty good job right now of having a lot of initiatives for low-impact developments. You know, we require pervious material in the town's right-of-way for new driveways. We're working on some dune infiltration, which certainly falls into low-impact development. We worked with a couple of property owners on rain gardens. Some other examples would be something like a bio-retention pond up in the top-left corner, which is a little bit different from a rain garden, just because of the type of infiltration it has. Tree boxes in the right-of-way are a good way to detain that stormwater and get some trees, pervious sidewalks and pervious materials. Once again, we encourage that highly, and a lot of property owners use that as well. And then little curb bumpouts, where you can put stormwater detention as well. So these are just some examples. There, there's many different examples of low-impact stormwater design. I'm sure if you have questions about it, Mr. Patterson would be happy to come talk to you guys. He's, he's pretty spot-on with things like smart yards and stuff like that. He's a pretty significant advocate of those types of things. One trick with, with rain gardens especially that we run into is versus like an underground detention, which is what we mostly see here on the island, especially because the lots are so small, so you have to put chambers underneath the driveway or beside the structure, et cetera, that are in the ground. A rain garden gets a little tough, because if that property changes hands, and the next guy goes, I don't really like that garden back there. They may not be aware that that's also their stormwater detention method that's in the rear property. So it does create some, you know, some issues with maintaining that long-term, but certainly an interesting way to set things up. And lots of other benefits as well. But that's just a quick run-through of what we have in here. We have a lot in this draft. Once again, these are all just options for this board to consider going forward. Certainly look forward to getting your discussion and feedback next week at the, at the special meeting. I'd be happy to try to answer any high-level questions you might have right now, but otherwise, we'll dig into it in detail next week.
Mr. Pittman, any questions? Mr. Persher?
No questions.
Morgan?
I'm good right now. I'm good.
Okay, Matt, we'll give you a minute and a half break while we go through board member reports, and then we'll do staff reports.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, so next on our agenda are board member reports, and we'll start with Mr. Brooks. Do you have anything for us today?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Bradley?
Good.
Mr. Persher?
No reports.
Mr. Pittman? Okay, the only thing I have is just, we've already been talking about it, but reminder that we have a special meeting next Tuesday, the 24th, at 9:00 a.m. We'll continue work on the table of uses, and thanks for the overview, Matt, and that'll help get us, get us moving through this material and up to speed. Okay.
Did Ms. McCullough have a report?
Um, thank you so much. Ms. McCullough, do you have a report for today? I'm so sorry, I can't see you and I forgot about you.
That's okay. No, no report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
But, but Madam Chair, I do, I do have a question to Matt. Matt, I think you were going to go through, I think, and you mentioned the consolidation of the uses in the table of uses. Maybe you might want to mention where that stands for the, for the board?
Yeah, so the, the draft that you have in front of you would consolidate many of those uses. You'll see when you look through the table, several uses being removed, and the intention is to replace those with either an overarching or a new definition that we've, we've stuck into the ordinance. So for example, under the manufacturing, you'll see that a lot of those very specific uses were struck through, and then light and heavy manufacturing added in. So that, that consolidation is being presented for you to consider as a part of this draft. Yes, ma'am. Great question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're back to you, Mr. Kirkland, for the presentation of your planning department annual report.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm really pleased to present this to you. For those that aren't aware, we presented this to, to council this month as well. The, the planning department compiled a kind of year-end review snapshot for the town council, and now for the planning board. Just to, to give you an idea of what's going on around the town, this, all this work, you know, wouldn't be possible without the tremendous staff in the planning department we have downstairs, without the support of this board, planning board, town council, board of adjustment, town administration. Y'all are the ones that help us get all of this work done. So hopefully everybody feels good about everything that's been, been happening in the department lately. But I'll run you through a few things here. You have the full report in your agenda packet. Who is the planning department? Y'all likely know most of these people. Me, of course, the department head, Brady Golden is our most recent hire. He's Planner One, which is an entry-level planning position that deals with day-to-day operations. So he deals with new home construction permits, things like that. He's typically the, the point person for review on those for the zoning side. Our CAMA local permit officer and floodplain administrator, Courtney Milliron, and our two zoning technicians, Deidra Horn and David Emerson, those are the folks that you usually see out there in the field every day doing inspections, taking on code cases, et cetera. So what are our main duties in the department? We maintain the adopted plans and policies of the town, including the comprehensive land use plan. We administer the unified development ordinance, as well as the CAMA local permit officer program and the flood hazard prevention ordinances. We also enforce several of the nuisance ordinances here in the town. So if you get a friendly letter from our code enforcement officer that you need to cut your grass, that's coming from the planning department. In addition, we serve as staff to the, the town council, the planning board, the board of adjustment, and the environmental advisory committee. So quite, quite a bit of boardwork happening in our department as well. The town does have a vision statement that's included in our comprehensive land use plan. I'll go ahead and read it for everybody to hear, that Oak Island will be a community which preserves, protects, and enhances its natural and cultural environment, including shoreline access, waterway, beaches, dunes, water access, residential areas, and recreational opportunities for all ages and abilities. The town's unique scale and character will continue to provide a desirable place in which to live, work, and vacation. Multi-modal transportation options, including efficient sidewalks, bikeways, and roadway systems, will provide for an accessible community, and economic development will be coordinated with the preservation of the town's residential areas. So once again, this is straight out of our comprehensive land use plan that was adopted in 2017. So some of the specific things that we do in the department, first, code and nuisance enforcement. So our zoning technicians go out and investigate violations of the town ordinances in the UDO, as well as nuisances. Some of those are driven by complaint basis. If someone gives us a call and lets us know about a potential problem, we go out there and check it. Sometimes it's just as simple as a ride-by, and it's very obvious that something needs to be done there. So the zoning technician goes ahead and starts a case on it right there. Some of the nuisances we see, junk vehicles, tall grass or weeds, accumulation of trash, animal waste, odors, right-of-way obstructions, there's, there's several more, but those are some of the most common ones that we run into on the nuisance side. For example, if you look on here, we've got an example of potentially a junk vehicle over here, and a junk vehicle is defined a specific way, so we'd have to investigate as to whether that vehicle is actually junk or not, make a determination. But then we've got some, some debris over here on the other side that needs to be cleaned up as well. We opened 1,002 code cases from September 1 of last year to the end of September this year. So quite busy in that department. The vast majority of those cases are closed. Close to 80, oh, actually, 86% of those are closed. Another 6% of those are unfounded, meaning over 90% of the cases are either taken care of, or there wasn't actually a violation there in the first place. 8% is in progress, which makes sense. You know, we probably, we had some started in the last couple of months that, that haven't wrapped up yet. So pretty, so pretty diligent work there from the zoning technicians on the code nuisance enforcement side.
Hey, Matt, Matt, can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
Um, so I'm assuming, and this is just for my education, and maybe others on the board can benefit, but, um, so when there is a code violation notification, you actually tell the property owner what part of the code they are not in compliance with, right? Like what the exact violation is, because I'm sure you get the response, well, it's my personal property, I can do whatever I want, right? And so probably part of this enforcement is explaining that there are ordinances and that you have to comply, correct?
Yeah, we always ask that the applicant reach out to us. Our goal is compliance. We're not out there to write, write citations, or, you know, shut anybody down. We want to help you find a way to, to get into compliance with our ordinances. So yes, ma'am, education's a big part of that, and letting people know where our ordinance is at, and what ordinance sections are applicable is, is an important part of that. Yes, ma'am. CAMA permitting, that's the Coastal Area Management Act. It's a big part of our department as well, me and a coastal community. We engage in what's called the local permit officer as well. We have a coastal community. We engage in what's called the local permit officer program. This is an optional program for local governments, but it's really important in coastal communities especially because that means that someone who needs a KAMA permit for some, for certain types of work doesn't have to deal with somebody in Wilmington. They can go to their local government office and deal with someone locally. So this is housed under the Division of Coastal Management, which is part of the Department of Environmental Quality. So our local permitting officer is Courtney Milliron. Our field representative from DCM is Patrick Amicov, and the district manager is Tara McPherson. We also, we have, also have a couple other staff members that are knowledgeable in KAMA for backup, just in case Courtney's not here. So usually we have somebody that can at least give you some guidance here in the office to help you out. If you need, if you need to know what the KAMA rules are, whether you even need a permit or not. Sometimes people think they need one and they end up not needing one at all. So. Once again, it's under the Division of Coastal Management. The, this is a state organizations who are really kind of directly operating under the auspices of the state. You know, local governments do that anyway, but this is kind of a direct line from the state agency to the local government. The rules for KAMA are set by the Coastal Resources Commission, which establishes those policies. And then once again, our LPO is our local level official who oversees minor activities. Certain permits, you have to go to KAMA no matter what. You have to go to, to DCM no matter what. But some small, some minor things we can do here in the town. These rules apply to what's called ocean hazard areas. So beach inlet hazards, unvegetated beaches, and coastal shorelines, public trust waters, ash spring waters, coastal wetlands. There's quite a few areas that this covers. Sometimes you think of KAMA as being beachfront properties, but we also deal with stuff on the ICW as well, where there may be coastal wetlands back there as well. Quite a few permit reviews and site visits done by Courtney under this program. One hundred and thirty-three exemptions reviewed and seventy-five minor permits reviewed. That doesn't include ones that maybe needed a major permit, so she had to review it to determine it needs a major and then send it up to the DCM staff as well, or a general permit. Those are two other permit types that have to go to DCM. A lot of this does involve going out in the field to, one, one of the main things she has to do is establish her first line of vegetation on the beach. What she's looking for there is the natural, stable growth of vegetation on that lot. So even if you plant a lot of stuff out there, it has to grow and actually be, be stable and grown in. So that does take a certain amount of time. New growth can't, or new plantings can't necessarily establish that first line of vegetation. Quite a few general site visits and consultation as well. Sometimes she does have to go back and reevaluate things for minor permits. And we do get some complaints regarding KAMA regulations. Somebody that thinks there might be a violation going on, so she does go check that out. Usually that's coordinated with, with DCM because a lot of times there, the enforcement side of, of the ordinances if there is, or of those regulations, if there's a violation. And sometimes she has to meet on-site with other agencies as well. So quite a few of those site visits. And just to give you an idea of how that shoreline can change out there, January 2013, this is the point. Just one year later, the point looks like this. So as you can see, it kind of narrowed in some places and expanded into others. And then just a few months later, it looks like this. You can see it's changed yet again. So it, it is kind of a moving target. And even when you get a first line of vegetation flagged, you know, we always give you the caveat that, hey, mother nature could come in here tomorrow and there'd be a king tide and a storm at the same time. And then some of this vegetation could even be buried or go away. You know what I mean? We had a lot, especially under the last couple of major hurricanes. We have, I think, East Ice knocked out a bunch of vegetation along the beach when that one blew through a few years ago. So it does happen where it changes quite rapidly. So once again, just kind of a percentage breakdown of the site visits, the majority being the first line of vegetation flagging that she does. In addition, Courtney handles our flood hazard prevention ordinance. This is also another big thing that the town deals with. Just an example here from Hurricane Floyd in 1999. Certainly we've had some major storms since then that have impacted the island. So flood hazard prevention is something we're always thinking about. For those of you that don't know, those flood zones are areas that are defined by FEMA. So FEMA and the state of North Carolina work together to produce flood maps that map out risk areas for flooding. That doesn't mean that it's never gonna flood where you live if you're not in a special flood hazard area. Everybody's, the water doesn't care what the map says. It can go anywhere. I've worked in plenty of jurisdictions where flooding affected areas that weren't in a special flood hazard area and didn't affect areas that were in the same storm. So what this does is produce a, a risk percentage, but everyone lives in a, in a potential flood hazard area. So what are those areas? Zone X, Zone X is pretty much everywhere this period. You have a point-two annual flooding risk, point-two percent. People commonly refer to this as a five-hundred-year storm, but that's a little bit of a misnomer because that makes people think that, oh, it only happened once every five-hundred years. No, what that means is that every year, there's a point-two percent chance of that type of storm happening. Shaded X is once you get to that point-two percent with more certainty. AE is a one percent annual chance. This is our first actual special flood hazard area. Now, the first two X, shaded X and X are not necessarily special flood hazard areas. There's no regulation to building in those outside, or no flood hazard regulation. The AE and the VE that have a one percent or higher annual chance of flooding are special flood hazard areas. So you have additional development regulations that you have to meet to build in those areas. The difference between the AE and the VE, AE is what you consider riverine flooding. So you usually see this inland, but we do have some here in the town. VE has wave action greater than three feet, so velocity, meaning that there's motion going with it. And that's important because that depends on how you actually build your structure. And the AE, we're worried about equalizing pressures on the inside and outside of the structure. So you actually want water to go through and sit and not create additional pressure on one side. Whereas VE, we're more worried about the velocity of that. So you might have like a breakaway wall in areas that might be flooded, that are in that flood hazard area versus the AE, you might have flood vents because we want to let that water come in naturally, sit, equalize the pressure, and then move out equally as well. There's a lot of other differences, but that's one of the main ones. Issued several flood hazard permits in the past twelve months, 225. So one non-residential building, seventy-two residential building, 113 land use, one planning, one plumbing, thirty-two pools, and five zoning. Pool's actually not a bad use in the special flood hazard area because there's nobody living in a pool. You know, a lot of the concern with flood hazards is certainly property values and, and the development values, but also whether there's people occupying those structures. So unoccupied structures and land uses are, if you want anything in the special flood hazard area, are usually pretty good ones to put there. So that's just a percentage breakdown. As you can see, about fifty percent land use, thirty-two percent residential building, and then fourteen percent pool make up the vast majority of those permit reviews that we did. In addition, she has to go out and do inspections on all these before, if anybody has a flood hazard permit for their development. We have to do a final flood inspection to make sure that what you submitted with your application is what's on the ground as well. So we check all the elevations, all your equipment, your mechanical, your electrical stuff, other standards for all that that have to be met when you're building in a, in a special flood hazard area. So we also administer the Unified Development Ordinance, which is Appendix A of the Town's Code of Ordinances. This is where we include most of our development regulations, zoning, subdivision, and development review processes. A few of them are outside stormwater or special flood hazard. Our tree and vegetation ordinances are in the general code, but this is the, the meat and potatoes of the, the planning side of stuff. Zoning regulates start uses, building placement, site design. Subdivision is, subdivision is a little bit interesting because everybody thinks about development with subdivision, but subdivision is actually just how you divide property. If you have a piece of property, and I want to split it into, how do you do that? That's a subdivision regulation. In addition, if you have to build a new road for that, to serve that division of land, it has standards for how you do that. And the development review processes are how the town reviews new proposals. Whether that's a single-family home or whether that's a Publix grocery store, have development review processes laid out in that ordinance as well. The town reviewed 1,017 permit applications in the past twelve months. That includes ten minor and two major project reviews. So quite a few permit reviews being conducted. In addition, staff conducted 2,707 inspections. So quite a lot of field work being done as well in the town. Three hundred and forty-one site compliance. That's kind of your first initial inspection after you submit a development permit. That's the very first inspection you get. We assist the stormwater administrator with field inspections as well. So conducted 604 stormwater inspections. And basically, our guys aren't stormwater experts. They're going out and checking to make sure that what you got on the ground matches the plan. And if there's questions about it, they, they refer with the stormwater administrator to make sure that you still meet the requirements of the ordinance. Final planning and zoning. So before you get your CO, we have to go out and check and make sure you meet all the development regulations on the planning and zoning side. Five hundred and five silt fence and temporary construction driveways. Whenever you develop a site, especially here on the island, you have to put up a silt fence. And so those little plastic fences, as you see, wrapped around the site. We also have standards for those construction driveways. They have to be a certain material. They have to be developed a certain way. So we check on that as well. And then driveway forming is one we do a lot too. So whenever somebody's ready to pour their actual concrete driveway, we go out and make sure that they got all the measurements right, that the width is right, et cetera. Usually before you pour, but if they pour and they messed up, well then, sorry guys, you gotta, you gotta tear it up and start over. So try to get them before, but. So as you can see, these are spread out pretty evenly. Most of them are final planning and zoning, but we have kind of a, a pretty even spread between the, all the inspections that our zoning technicians are conducting out in the field. You know, they do a tremendous job between Courtney and our zoning technicians. And even with the permit review that Brady does, you know, anytime you think about a few thousand things being done every year, that's, that's a lot of review going on. In addition, as I mentioned, we staff several boards here at the town. Usually y'all are used to seeing me. I'm trying to integrate Brady a little bit into some of these to help him build up his planning career. He's, he's just starting out, so I'm trying to get him a little bit more exposure to some new things. But you'll still be seeing me in the planning board and town council, so get used to it. Town council, we had twenty-four items that we assisted them with, eighteen public hearings, three text amendments. Some text amendments don't require a public hearing. For example, parking, when, when the paid parking ordinance was adopted, it didn't require a public hearing, but staff assisted with that draft and helped town council with that. Two major site plan reviews in the last year and one general report to the town council. The planning board, this is actually, I should say fifty, I apologize, I thought I had fixed this. We assisted you guys with fifty items, twenty-one proposed amendments, eighteen discussion items, two major site plan reviews, nine other reports and agenda items. This isn't really like unusual for a planning board because y'all are kind of here to deliberate and try to work out kinks and stuff like that before you send it up to, to town council for an actual public hearing. So it's not unusual to have a bunch of discussion items to kind of try to work issues out on the planning board end, as much as you can anyway. We also had a couple of board of adjustment cases. This is where you might see Brady a little bit more in the future. He's handled a couple of them in the last few weeks. Did a pretty good job too. I was really proud of him. But we had six variances. For those who aren't aware of variances, if somebody can't meet a dimensional standard in the ordinance, say they've got an odd-shaped lot or something like that, and they say, well, I can't meet the side setback because my lot's a weird triangle shape, or something unusual like that, they can come ask for some relief from that dimensional standard in the ordinance. And the board of adjustment holds a quasi-judicial hearing for that. So it's not like going to court. It's open, you know, we have very formal procedures for something like that. It's sworn testimony. People are subject to cross-examination. So, and there's four standards that are set by the state statute that you have to meet. You have to prove those four things to the board before they can grant you a variant. So it's pretty tough to actually get one, in my experience, but not impossible. And then one appeal of staff determination as well, which if someone dis, if, you know, we fail your inspection or if we tell you you're in violation of the ordinance, and you think, well, no, I'm not. We definitely have a due process for you there where you can go to the board of adjustment and plead your case. Also a quasi-judicial hearing, so same procedures there as well. In addition, the planning staff handles long-range planning for the town, including maintaining our adopted plans. This is a snippet from the comprehensive land use plan. This is the future land uses map of the town of Oak Island. You may recall if we've ever had a zoning map amendment, especially, I'll try to bring you guys, what does the future land use map look like in this area? What is a call-out for the specific parcel? So making sure that this is current and reflects what we want for the vision of the future of the town is an important part of that long-range planning for the town. Transportation planning as well. The Cape Fear RPO, Rural Planning Organization, it's kind of our planning agency for transportation planning. They assist us with transportation planning needs. This is a snippet from the East Coast Greenway feasibility study that was done, showing some potential areas for greenways through the town. We've been working with DOT to see some of these segments come to fruition, hopefully in the, the near future. But we work with the RPO for things like traffic studies, traffic counts. So even if we need to say, hey, we need to know how many cars are coming over the bridge, we, the RPO can usually help us out with some traffic counts on stuff like that. In addition, they help us with dealing with the NC DOT to get our projects into state funding opportunities, whether that's a grant or prioritization, which we just went through, which is where you kind of submit projects for scoring from the DOT to, to see whether you're even competitive for funding for a particular project. And then you can kind of sharpen it up from there to get into their long, long-term funding plans for state projects. And then we do provide GS support for other agencies in the town as well. So that includes mapping. This is a cutout of a map that we did for the fire department where they wanted to know every road that was in a five-mile drive distance from the fire stations that the town has. And they need to know that for their, for their ratings from the agencies that come in and review them. So we were able to set a point. We used a little fire truck on each fire station and then generate a map that showed every road within the network that was a five-mile drive distance from that. So very helpful for them. On this particular map, the, kind of, it's tough to see on the screen, but there's a darker purple in there that is the actual road. And then it set up a little boundary around that to kind of show the land area around it. So very happy to be able to help them with something like that. So what are we looking at for the future of the department? We want to continue long-range planning efforts. That doesn't include just the comprehensive land use plan update that we're, we're working on the RFP for right now. that we're, we're working on the RFP for right now. Going to update on, on that in just a little bit. But how do we implement those plans? You know, plan's great, but if it sits on the shelf and gathers dust, then it's not really helping anybody. So it's not just about adopting those plans and getting them in place. It's how do we actually put these into action going forward? So want to continue to, to try to implement that the best way we can. Do want to consider enhancing our GIS capabilities here in the town. There, we have access to a lot of mapping tools out there. Really, it's about having the resources to implement them. So we're, you know, looking at ways that we, we can enhance that, not just for the planning department, but for the town as a whole, you know, fire, police, recreation, economic development. Everybody can use these tools, these mapping tools that we have available to us. Continue implementation of the UDO audit recommendations. You know, we're working on the table of uses right now. One of those recommendations was to modernize that, but we had several others. As we knock one out, we want to keep on moving to the next one. We don't want to hold off on that. And enhance flood hazard prevention here in the town. The town participates in the community rating system. This is a system that's done by FEMA, where, where in the town goes above and beyond the minimum standards for flood hazard prevention. And depending on how far we go above and beyond those minimum standards, people actually get a discount on their federally-backed flood insurance. So it's essentially 5% per grade you're in. We're in a grade six right now. One is the best, and it's the worst, we're at a six. I'm happy to say that we just recently maintained our six despite the fact that the standards got harder. So that was actually pretty good that we didn't drop down in that instance. We've been doing a great job, but we want to keep going that because not only, not only does it give people a discount, it just helps everybody in the town in the event of a flood emergency, especially if we build in some of these residencies. And so our goals going forward are to complete the update of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, evaluate our needs for long-range planning efforts and implementation, whether that's additional small-area plans, you know, bike pad plans, transportation plans, et cetera. And then implementation, you know, how do we get these things taken care of once they're adopted? Figure out ways to enhance our GIS capabilities townwide. As I just mentioned, it could be a boon to all departments in the town. To get our town zoning technicians and planners to achieve their certified zoning official status. This is the state certification. We've got two staff members in the program right now. So hopefully, they'll actually be wrapping that up in the next month or two. And then I've got a, one more to get after that. So hopefully, we'll be making some progress on that goal. It does involve an exam at the end, so that's getting grown people to tell them that they got to take a 200-question exam. Tough to motivate that, but we're working on it. In addition, find it, getting our town planning staff certified floodplain manager certification. We do have several certified floodplain managers here in the town. Courtney, our floodplain administrator, just got hers this year. I'm one. Steve Edwards in the building department is one as well. So we definitely have plenty of resources available for that one. But anytime we can add that capacity, it is a good thing for the town. Continue to implement our recommendations from the UDO audit, and then reach a grade five rating on our next CRS rating evaluation. That won't happen for another two years, but that gives us plenty of time to look at areas where we can improve. We have a, they give you all the things that you can do and give you an idea of how they're going to score them. So we're already looking for, is there any low-hanging fruit out there? You know, that doesn't necessarily, some of it might be regulatory changes, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. There's educational opportunities out there, public outreach opportunities that give us credit as well. So anytime we can enhance that, we're going to be looking for an opportunity to do it, to get that benefit for everybody in the town. And that, yep, that's everything I had for y'all. Any questions or anything I can help you out with?
Any questions for Mr. Kirkland? Carrie, any questions for Mr. Kirkland on his presentation?
Yeah, two questions, I think, just for public benefit. One, Matt, where would people go to find out where the relative or relevant flood maps for their property or a potential property they were looking at buying?
Yeah, there's, there's two ways you can do it. Well, there's three. You can call us, you can call the planning department, and we'll, we'll be happy to look it up for you and help you out with that. If you want to look on your own, you can go to the Brunswick County GIS system. They have a flood layer that you can turn on, and it'll put it right on the map for you. In addition, the state maintains their mapping in what's called NCFRIS. That's F-R-I-S, that's Flood Risk Information Systems. But if you just Google NCFRIS, it'll take you to the state mapping for that. And you can, sometimes that's a little bit quicker than the Brunswick County one, and it doesn't have a bunch of other layers turned on. So if you're one to look it up on your own, that's, that's a good tool for it as well.
Okay, thank you. And the second question is, what do we, what do we take from things that go to the board of adjustment for variances? Do we do any due diligence in terms of what, you know, if we find certain things in terms of dimensional standards that are a problem to meet? So therefore, maybe we should look at some UDO change? Or, in other words, do we tie any of those variance requests back to what the UDO looks like? Because some of them may be repetitive or create some unreasonable hardship that we should act on from an ordinance standpoint?
Certainly, if we had several coming in that were the same thing over and over again, staff would take that into consideration. We haven't had that problem lately, but certainly, we, we would take a look at it. I mean, if you're getting a bunch of variances on the same thing, and it's just happening over and over and over and over again, then that may mean that there's a problem in your ordinance that needs to be addressed, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
But variances, I will say, are on a case-by-case basis. The board looks at the individual peculiarities of, of each property. So it's not like it's something that can be, actually, one of the standards is that it has to be peculiar to that property and not in general to the neighborhood. So, you know, but yeah, if it keeps happening, we would look at it.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Any further questions for Mr. Kirkland on his report?
Just to comment, congratulations on maintaining your grade six.
Thank you, yeah. Courtney handles the CRS certification as part of her duties as floodplain administrator. There's a tremendous amount of stuff you have to submit to the federal government. I don't know if anybody of y'all have worked with the federal government before, but they make sure that all your Ts or cross-nice are dotted very well. She did a great job. But I will say, our, the, the folks that do our reviews are very accommodating and always, if they see something wrong, they give us a chance to address it. So, yeah, it's been great.
Yeah, hitting moving targets, it's not always...
It can be tough, that's for sure.
Matt, thank you for this report, and thank you for all the good work that you've done, particularly in helping the, the planning board get our business done.
Absolutely, happy to do it.
And so if you don't mind, we're going to leave you there. We'll go to the next item, which is just an update on items awaiting council consideration.
Yeah, this, this is just a running item in your agenda packet. I don't believe there were any changes from the last month that you had it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Very good. Any, any questions on this, Carrie?
No, no.
Any, any questions by anyone else? Okay, and then last thing is planning staff updates.
Absolutely. Couple of updates for you guys. The first being the tree canopy assessment being conducted by Planet Geo. We actually have an update from when this was written and drafted that we have confirmed with the consultant that they'll be presenting at the November regular council meeting, the results of that study. They'll have an in-person member of Planet Geo come, give a, a brief presentation, and be available for question and answers as a part of that presentation. So definitely looking forward to that. Should be a good presentation for everybody.
When was that, in November?
Uh, at least Wednesday.
Fourteenth, okay.
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth?
Second Tuesday.
The staff is also working on drafting our RFP for the update of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We're still targeting November town council meeting for, for them to review that as well. We did confirm with Wes from the Cape Fear Council of Governments. Somebody all are familiar with Wes. He's sort of just kind of interim planner before he came on board, and he's helped us a little bit since. He's going to come give you some kind of high-level planning board overview at your November meeting. So that is also, we confirmed that as well. He'll be here at nine o'clock. He said he might be rolling in right at nine. That's fine, man, we'll be here. The wellhead protection overlay district, we're targeting the December town council meeting for the county to come do a presentation. With that, we have reached out to the county. The county's planning director was out of the office when I reached out to her, so I'm just waiting for a response when she gets back into the office. I believe they did one for St. James recently, though, I heard. So hopefully, they'll be willing to do something similar here as well. The staff training updates. Deidra and Brady went through their second week of training with the School of Government for the Planning and Development Regulation Course. Again, this is kind of culminates in their certification as certified zoning officials in the state of North Carolina. That should wrap up in the beginning of November with their exam. So they have to, they've done the last two sections have been virtual, so they've been down to the office still checking emails and stuff like that while they've been in class. But they actually have to go back to my alma mater to go get an exam and learn about the grade zoning opportunities here in the state of North Carolina. That's all I had for you.
Does anyone have any questions on the staff updates? Ms. McColl, you have any questions on staff updates?
I'm on chair.
All right, folks, that concludes, thank you very much, Matt. Sorry you had to talk so much today.
No, no, it's fine. It actually made me feel a little bit better to be up and moving around.
Okay, so that does conclude our business for today. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Get up and leave.
Thank you very much.